Called to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, June 2nd. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role, please?
Councilmember Chronic?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
That's you. You're Mayor Pro Tem King. Here.
Here.
Sort it.
Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
Councilmember Furito?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor O'Kind?
Here.
Councilmember Kimple?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. First up disclosures of conflicts of interest. Mr. Cole, did you receive any conflicts of interest?
I did not.
Okay, we can skip over that one then. And before us, we have consent agenda. Any modifications to the consent agenda?
I would like to make a modification just on a typo. And I think it's on the third page. On the seventh line down, where was the statement that I made last time, Tina, where it says warehouse space and wrong, it should be wouldn't. That was all.
Okay, so do we have a motion to modify the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to modify the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, and then as far as the agenda goes, any modifications to the agenda? Something happen?
Mr. Kimple, I need you to join as well as Marco.
Oh. Who's not joined? Did you join? I'm joined. Ken?
I'm not joined yet. I'm still trying, but my vote is yes.
Yeah, same here. Vote is yes. I'm working on it.
Are you good, Tina? Okay, the agenda. Any modifications to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Are they being, is it being displayed?
My vote is yes. I'm having problems logging in. It's not letting me.
I'm a yes as well. I'm still working.
Yeah, I gotta tell my daughter I'm in a council meeting. Okay, first up tonight, we have presentation from the Girls of the West Pike Peak Ranger Riders and the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo. Who will be presenting tonight?
Well, we all will be, so just bear with us. This is a good time for us and we really appreciate you guys. My name's Greg Budwine. I'm with the Pike's Peak Range Riders here in Colorado Springs and we just want to let you know, guys, no, thanks for taking the time. We invite you out to our street breakfast. The Range Riders started from some pretty special guys named Ken Brookheart and Eric Khan over back in 1949. We've been going for a long time. Seventy-six years later, here we are. We're 200 strong and we're business leaders, horsemen, and Western heritage lovers who support everything from the Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame to our beloved military families. I also have a schedule of everything I'll pass out here shortly, so you can see everything we do and we'd sure welcome you guys to join us. It doesn't just stop there. When we're not on horseback, we're keeping the cowboy code alive through our facility called Latigo. It's a 45-acre horse lover's paradise. Where we teach the next generation the cowboy way, which is hard work, honesty, respect, all while we still have a good time. We have our very own Pike's Peak Rangerettes who train there and these young ladies are the heart and soul of Latigo. And if you've ever seen them ride, they'll bring the house down and their girls from 12 to 20, riding in a group together. They perform at our rodeo, the Or Bust and other parades and events on the front range and it's something pretty special to watch. You'll hear from Emma tonight, who's a lot better at what we're doing up here tonight than I am, but she's our Girl of the West and our very own ambassador for our rodeo and she spends countless hours in our community lending a hand and promoting the rodeo as well. And we also started a Pike's Peak Special Rodeo, where we give kids of all abilities a chance to saddle up and shine and you'll see the magic continue at every rodeo performance when the Pike's Peak Range Rider pivots burst into the arena to open our rodeo. We'd just like to traditionally invite you to our street breakfast, which will be June 18th. If you can picture flapjacks flying on the griddle at 5:30, the smell of bacon, a lot of smiles. At 8:00 AM sharp, we ride out, we mount up and then we ride out and it's a site you should come see. Thank you for your time tonight and until then, just remember, we'll see you at the rodeo on July 8th through the 12th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And what time did you say breakfast starts?
It goes till nine, but we start early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a note at 5:30 and
Hi, I'm Laurie Carroll, Vice President of the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo Board of Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight. Our Girl of the West, Emma, will tell you a little bit about our history and what to expect at this year's rodeo, July 8th through 12th, at the Norris Penrose Event Center, so I'll be short. This community event is supported by thousands of local fans and sponsored by many area businesses and organizations, as well as regional and national sponsors. We're thankful for all the support to our event as we honor Western heritage and support our local military and their families. That's at the core of our mission. Our rodeo has grown in national visibility and attracts attendees from all 50 states, as well as visitors from several countries outside the U.S. We're proud to showcase the Pike's Peak community and all it has to offer to our fans and contestants. The Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo is led by an all-volunteer board of directors and supported by over 400 volunteers. Many of us are veterans. We greatly appreciate our local military and their family sacrifices and are passionate about giving back to them through the proceeds from our rodeo and other fundraisers. We look forward to seeing you at the rodeo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Corliss Palmer and I'm a 24-year volunteer for the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo. As such, I've been directing the Girls of the West all that time. It's a great opportunity I have. As such, I schedule and escort the Girl of the West to over 150 appearances between the middle of May and the middle of July. So we have several a day typically and we're busy. The Girl of the West program started in 1922 with the first Girl of the West, Dawn Norris, 103 years ago. So we're still going strong. The Girl of the West is chosen from a competition on the Thursday of Rodeo Week. The competition is comprised of horsemanship, speech, interview, the impromptu speech and appearance. This competition is held July 11th this year, or 10th this year. Today, we have some posters and some flyers. If you'd like to pass those around the town, we'd be appreciative. Emma Concedine is the 20-year-old daughter of Craig and Mandy. Concedine, she's been deeply involved in the rodeo community, serving as Kit Carson Riding Club Queen in 2002 and 2003, and the Elizabeth Stampede Queen last year. She's competed in Jim Connor Buckle Series for the past six years and was a member of Kit Carson's drill team for five years. She graduated from the Village High School in Colorado Springs and is currently studying business marketing at the University of Wyoming. In her free time, she enjoys spending time outside with her brothers, skiing, rafting and trail riding with friends. Emma rides a Palomino gilding named Sandy. Please enjoy her presentation.
Hi, my name is Emma. I'm the Girl of the West and I serve as the proud ambassador for the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo. I'm excited to let you know that pro rodeo world champions and rising stars from the U.S. and Canadian circuits and national champions from Mexico will be here to compete for over $1 million in payouts. It's all happening at the NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo, July 8th through the 12th in Colorado Springs. 250 contestants will be bringing their A-game to the scenic and historic Norris Penrose Event Center to compete in bareback riding, breakaway roping, steer wrestling, team roping, tie-down roping, barrel racing, bull riding and saddle bronc riding. Finals will be held on Saturday night, July 12th, when the national circuit champions will be crowned. There are two reasons why I am both proud and passionate about this rodeo. First, this legacy event reminds us to preserve and celebrate our Western heritage and values, all while hosting the best in sport of professional rodeo. I'm proud to say I was raised with these values. This is my heritage. And second, I'm grateful we honor our local military with every performance. U.S. Army, SMDC and MDA on Tuesday night, Fort Carson, 4th Infantry Division on Wednesday evening, first responders and 302nd airlift wing on Thursday evening, guard reserve units and educators at the Friday matinee, Space Night on Friday evening, the United States Air Force Academy at the Saturday matinee, and NORAD U.S. Northcom on Saturday evening. The Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo has been proudly giving back to our local service members and their families since 1946, and I am passionate about that mission. There's nothing quite as exciting as seeing professional rodeo in person when the caliber is so high and competition is so fierce. You've got to be here to experience it and we have seven, count them, seven performances to do so. The NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo takes place July 8th through the 12th, with evening performances Tuesday through Saturday and matinee performances on Friday and Saturday. Evening performances start at 7:00 PM with grounds opening at 4:00 PM. Matinee performances start at noon with grounds opening at 10:00 AM. Be sure to stick around after the rodeo for autographs from the contestants, Rangerettes, visiting royalty and me, your very own Girl of the West. Want to skip the traffic? Of course you do. We have free garage parking and free shuttles to the rodeo and back to your car for every performance. Be sure to arrive early, grab a bite to eat and check out the apparel and other Western fare our vendors have for sale. Find more fun in the PPOBR fan zone with kid-friendly activities, rides, mutton busting prelims and more. We also have plenty of vendors, our feedlot tent and the beer and wine corral for adults. When you see our awesome pink ram truck from Perkins Motors all over town, please know I'll be waving. I hope you'll be waving back. We'll be heading out to represent our rodeo at businesses, military installations and community events and stopping by to see some of our generous sponsors who help make this event possible. Speaking of community events, please plan to join us bright and early in downtown Colorado Springs on June 18th for the annual Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast and the official send-off for the Pike's Peak Range Riders annual ride. Then get ready for the best in professional rodeo at the NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo, July 8th through the 12th at the Norris Penrose Event Center. Tickets are selling fast. Get yours online at pikespeakorbus.org. I'll see you there. I can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Maybe 7:00 AM would be. I know, I heard. Really?
The lines are shorter.
Oh, good, just because everybody's sleeping.
Once again, excellent presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have a discussion item on a proposed annexation and development of Willow Springs Ranch filing number three, also known as the Rickinbacher property. Ms. John Glider?
So this is for discussion purposes only. This is not a public hearing. What I'd like to do tonight is kind of walk you through a proposal that's been presented to the planning department, bringing it to you tonight for your just initial consideration and with hopes that you'll pass it back to the plant commission so that they can formally review it, consider the details and then send it back to you for formal processing. So the project specifically is Mr. McConnell of Drexel Barrel and Company is proposing the town's annexation of a 39.6 acre property formerly known as the Rickinbacher property, which is north of Willow Springs Ranch, filing one and two, for the development of 38,000 to 15,000 square foot or larger single-family residential lots. There's a site, a full description of the project included with the memo that I provided to you. The that, these are several different types of location maps. One is just showing a location being north of Forest Lake Drive. Between Forest Lake Drive and the subject property is Willow Springs Ranch, as well as a vacant school-owned property, which would be later used to provide access to this site. The zoning currently is unincorporated El Paso County and our land use, future land use plan as part of our comprehensive plan shows it for single-family residential. This is a quick, the proposed concept for the layout of the subdivision. As I said, it's 38 lots. It's running adjacent to some, to some open space with stormwater drainage. And then to the next property to the, to the north, there's a remaining ranch. This makes, this image here actually makes it a little easier to see without the arrow in the background. And as you can see, it's utilizing the entrance from Forest Drive into the site. It does indicate a, another access point out into Rickinbacher Road. So the process which I'm asking for is just a, tonight is a project introduction and I'm asking for you to refer it back to plan commission to really go through the details. The proposal vetting and development would be by staff and plan commission. Staff would review, draft an annexation agreement with, with the developer and plan commission. Plan commission would hear any public comments, initial public comments regarding the zoning and the layout. And then we would bring it back to you for formal, the formal annexation process, notices of hearing and adoption of ordinance. This is just a quick outline of what an annexation agreement could include. Again, a brief introduction of the, of the purpose of the agreement, legal descriptions of the property, terms and conditions, zoning and land use, municipal services. This would be on our water, would be under our stormwater management permit and so on. So we would have that all identified in the annexation agreement. Any infrastructure improvements that would be required as part of this project, we would discuss that during the, during this development of this annexation agreement. And then any financial considerations would also be included, such as fees, impact fees and cost of infrastructure and so on. We will put that all into there. And then any existing or any resulting tax implications that might occur to us or other taxing bodies. Comply with a confirm that it's compliance with our laws. We would ensure that there would be public involvement with, to make sure we were addressing these issues or any issues that might come in play. Try to resolve any disputes that might be occurring in there as well and then have both room for signatures by both the developer and town. So that was my very brief description of the, of the project. Tim is here, so he can provide answers to any of your initial questions. But what I'm asking tonight is that you refer this back to plan commission, so they can consider some of the details and develop something that hopefully you can formally consider later for the annexation process. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I have, I have a couple, just as this comes up. Do we know what's going to happen with that school property? Is there any idea? Because it's kind of too small for a school, is my assumption.
So I have done no research on this.
And I didn't expect you to, that's why I'm asking.
So that's a great question and that's something that we would, I'd be reaching out to the school district and trying to learn more about what their intentions are. I know the developer may have already spoken to them, so it'll be providing access from a previous arrangement with Willow Springs Ranch, so, but we would get all those answers for you.
Okay, and then and this has come up before, but we've got one entrance into that smaller property off of Forest Lakes and then there's one lot width, which is, I don't know, 150 feet or whatever it is, and then we've got another entrance coming in there. So how does that get mitigated?
So my understanding, and Tim would be able to answer a little bit more to this, is that the existing entrance would become a right-in, right-out and the new entrance that would provide full access to both sites would be a full access point. It would be designed more appropriately for that subdivision.
Okay, so there's, because it, well, we can get into the details later. I just want to make sure that we're like looking at that part of it.
Yes, sir.
And then two more quick questions. One is, is the exit to Rickinbacher a permanent entrance and exit, or is that just for emergency use only?
Right now, I believe it's being proposed as a full, full access, but that's something we're going to talk about. Hi, Tim. But yeah, that's something that we're going to be talking about through that process. We know it's always better to have two points of access into a subdivision of this size, but we're going to have to talk about how formal that back access might be in the long run.
One last question is, is there, is there going to be a community engagement meeting? I'm sure there's probably a few people sitting in the audience right now, so is that going to also take place?
Well, we're going to absolutely encourage that to happen. We want to make sure that, that we're not, that when we're doing our presentation or discussion at plan commission, it's not the first time the neighbors have heard about this proposal, so I think the message is probably making it to Tim here, so we would fully encourage that.
Okay, that's all I have for questions right now.
I'm just, I guess. I haven't seen it done like this, that we get, that the council gets a presentation before the planning commission goes through all the wickets. So I don't know if this is going to become the norm or if this is something unique and different that we have to, that we're doing this, that we're getting a presentation.
Well, I
Because, you know, in the presentation, I don't know, we're not supposed to debate, discussion and findings of all these little, I mean, I have a list of things, but I'm not going to bring them up because this is a presentation. So.
Counselor Kimple, I appreciate that. I'm trying to make sure that we have open dialogue and that you're informed way in advance of a proposal of this nature, since it's an annexation. And I am trying to make sure that the findings and the points that you'll probably find really important aren't coming up at the end of the game at council, that they're, that we're allowing, we're relying on our plan commission to kind of vet out those issues upfront and work with the public, so that way you're not having those debates without the accurate information for you.
And I, I do appreciate that because we can kind of roll it one direction and then they can hear it at the planning commission and the people in the room can hear and we can have open dialogue on this.
And I hope that this process is actually showing that we want that open dialogue.
I believe this, if I'm not mistaken, this, this project came before town staff and several members of the council, I think we all were there for it when it first came. And it came out of a request to staff to start holding these kind of preliminary meetings when especially an annexation was tied to it, so that we had an idea of what was coming and if the gentleman that's with you, Tim, were you, were you at those meetings initially a couple of years ago?
No, Tim McConnell with Drexel Brell represent the current folks that have it under contract, representing Willow Springs Ranch developer. At that point, I think that might have been Aspen View Homes, I think, may have been looking at the property at that point in time and with the much greater density, it was two or three times as many lots.
It was like 100, it was like 100 lots back then.
So we're not, not related to that, but.
Okay, so my point was is that I'm glad that we're doing this because when we, when we first discussed it with them and they showed us the 100 homes, it was fairly egregious and the Rickinbacher Road was not going to be accessible. That was a problem because it won egress. So I'm glad that there's been a modification and that you guys brought it back to us, so we could have a preliminary view prior to, I mean, this, this is the discussion and being willing to renegotiate, if you will. I'm happy for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Yeah, and I think that the planning commission should take a look at it. I would love their feedback as well, so thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you. So, so I'm assuming that we're taking it to plan commission then?
Well, I'd like
Not a formal act. I'm just going to listen to you.
I would like to have some of the questions answered that I asked, just preliminary, especially with immunity engagement.
Absolutely.
And if the annexation eligibility you brought up, right, we have to still go through an eligibility hearing?
Yeah, there's still going to be a full formal process of what I'm going through at the, making sure that the application is eligible and then through the normal, the normal hearing processes and so on. But you'll have a lot more information to back that right up, hopefully through our discussions with plan commission. Or we might come back to you and say that something doesn't work. So I just want to, want to make sure that you're aware that you're not approving something tonight. You're just allowing that your, your understanding is that we're going to be talking about it.
And once again, Tim McConnell. Yep, we met with Dan on this. It's been a month or two back now, you know, with this concept. Wanted to get Dan's recommendation, get this in front of council. Really for informal discussion, we would like to get some feedback to council informally before we start preparing a formal package to submit to planning commission and staff and, you know, get it out, get it in front of the public. So obviously it came in previously with a much higher density and we're not proposing that at this point, something that we think this is a reasonable plan, but plenty of issues to be hammered out yet. It's really just a concept at this point in time. Mayor Pro Tem King, the emergency or the access to Rickinbacher totally opened to us at this point in time. I think that's a discussion to be had with emergency services, town staff and everything going forward, whether that's an emergency access only or full movement. We would have to discuss that with the county as well, because we'd need an access permit onto Rickinbacher, similar to the other two access points on the Forest Lakes Drive. We had to go through the county access permit process for those. And what Dan described earlier is correct. The existing access is a full movement on the east side. But if this development or if the school develops, that further west access would become the full movement and the other access would be restricted to right-in, right-out. That was a condition of the county access permit that we acquired when we did that part of the development and granted that right-of-way to the school district or to the county for that school district and this property in particular. This came out of that prior discussion when Aspen View Homes was looking at this property. The county required us to go through that process for the, for the access permit and grant that right-of-way on the east end of the school property. And as far as public hearings, we would definitely have a neighborhood meeting, if not more than one, and then go through the formal town process. And as far as public hearings, we would definitely have a neighborhood meeting, if not more than one, and then go through the formal town process. With planning commission and all the, the normal public hearings going forward.
Yeah, the, the neighborhood meeting is important to me personally.
Yes.
And the, the access off of Forest Lakes will, I mean, that, that will be a, a county decision, is that correct? Cause that's a county road, right?
Correct. Uh, for the right away that was granted, we say on the east end of that school property, that was already. Yeah, granted at the county's direction, but we would still, I think, formally apply for an access permit, but it's county right away or currently.
Sure, it just seems tight, so, well, it is tight, it didn't seem tight, so um.
And the school, we haven't contacted them yet, but let's say part of our prior work. The five acres that you see there, kind of the little pie shaped, was dedicated by Willow Springs Ranch to the school district.
Right.
And then we vacated the old um, Rickenbacher Forest Lakes Drive right of way. So the school district has one contiguous parcel, I think they have another nine plus acres to the west of that, so they've got about a fourteen, fifteen acre parcel all, altogether. It's kind of elongated east-west, but they have a lot more acreage than, than it appears right there.
Right, yeah, it looks small, that's why I was saying.
And like saying, this plan, this area shown in your comp plan, as Dan mentioned, is used by single family. We tried to put some, you know, larger lots, there's a fifteen thousand plus half acre. Even and beyond some of these lots, kind of a transition into the, the larger lots in the county to the west, so.
All right, that's all I have. Any other, right, comments? Marco, anything?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm with Ken, I'm, I'm not quite sure what we can delve into, uh, because, you know, I, I don't. I, I appreciate the, the presentation of, of, of this effort. Um, and I'm interested in, um, and like, um, Steve King, I, I have some questions, especially. The um, road access and, and um, and one ways in, one way out, but um. Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll be interested to see what the planning commission says. Over.
Roger out. Okay, well, thank you very much for, for bringing to our attention and um, yeah, we're, we're not gonna give you direction. On anything, you just.
Now, thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to us.
Um, and I, I know there might be some folks here in, 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 in here who, who wanna speak on behalf or on, on their feelings about the project. I'm gonna give you my business card before you leave, we can talk. Um, I, I'm going to welcome you into the plan commission meetings. Um, and, and have, and try to address those issues here, um, or address those issues in this room with a different body. Uh, but I really, this, tonight was an introduction to them to let them know that this might be, this will be coming forward to them at some point. But we're gonna work out those issues upfront as best we can. Uh, but I'm not here stepping in front of the mayor and the council. If they wanna hear anything, they certainly can, but I just wanted to offer life services to you.
No, I don't wanna get into public comments on something like this, because it's not, it's not really an official anything. This is just you saying, hey, we're out there and we're thinking of doing something and you should. We, we don't have the power to stop you from going forward anyway, so. We, we're just gonna not have public comment right now, there's a process for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I guess don't go anywhere. Cause you do have an ordinance, um, which does have a public hearing, which will have comment on it. This is an ordinance granting conditional use approval for outdoor storage at uh, eight thirty-six Synthes Avenue.
I will be. Shift. Good evening again. So the, this is a case that went back down before the plan commission. They hung up. There we go. User error. Okay, so the, this case tonight is, um, it's a, uh, the, the applicant is seeking a conditional use approval. For outdoor storage at eight thirty-six Synthes Avenue. Uh, public notice has been provided for both the plan commission and town council. Uh, and a brief introduction, um, Mr. Kuzbeck of West Works Engineering on behalf of uh, the Chandler. Uh, Chandler Knop, and actually Chandler might be here tonight, I didn't see, there he is. Uh, is seeking approval of a conditional use for outdoor storage as part of the development. And operation of an office warehouse building at eight thirty-six Synthes. Uh, conditional use criteria per our code, uh, section eighteen oh three, three, two, zero, D. Um, make sure that, that the conditional or the, the, the proposed use of the property need, uh, meets certain conditions. And um, including uh, complying or being, not being in conflict with the town's comprehensive plan, goals and policies for the, the area. Uh, to make sure that it meets the purpose and intent of the zoning district in which it's located. Uh, to be consistent with uh, uh, use specific standards that are set by, uh, set by the uh, the code itself. Uh, to make sure that it's compatible with the adjacent area in terms of scale, site design, operations and so on. That facilities and services, including sewage, uh, treatment, waste, disposal, water, gas and so, uh, other utilities. Um, are, um, exist um, for that proposed use. Um, that we have adequate assurances of continuing maintenance um, um, for the, the specific specified use. And any significant adverse impacts anticipated as a result of that use are mitigated. Uh, or offset to the maximum extent, uh, reasonably practicable, practicable, practicable. The, uh, the site specifically is located on Synthes Avenue, it's uh, just south of the building that's being built right now at ABC. Uh, ABC Landscaping. Um, it is, uh, and then it's two doors, about two doors north of Elite Cranes. Uh, they're seeking a conditional use approval for outdoor storage. Uh, the surrounding zoning and land use is a light industrial. Uh, for the site, uh, ABC Landscaping to the north is also that same zoning district. That to the south is vacant property, uh, which is also zone light industrial. And as I said before, further south is Elite Cranes. Um, to the east is a Union Pacific Railroad, as well as the Santa Fe Trail subdivision. And to the west is vacant property owned by the town monument for a future public works facility. Uh, this is the site plan. Uh, the site plane is showing a, a building at the uh, northwest corner of the property. Um, there's a parking lot to the south of that building, and then directly adjacent and south of that is the outdoor stor- storage area in question. The red dotted line is the, is a six foot chain link fence with slats. Um, which is shown around the perimeter of the property and the front uh, entrance is gated. Also shown on the site plan, are, um, are trees to be preserved. You'll see that in the uh, the cloud bubble, you can't see that on this screen, but um, uh, on the actual site plan, you'll see that at the north. The, 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 the heavier uh, uh. The heavier forested area on that northeast corner is all in a cloud bubble for preservation. And then there's other trees that are shown outside of that, uh, those are uh, trees that are been marked um, for relocation on the, on the site. And you'll see the, the relocation site, the relocation uh, spots are in the heavier asterisk or tree uh, symbol. Um, I'm also, I wanted to make sure that you understood what the building was gonna look like, although that's not something that was reviewed or considered. As part of the special use, since we were just looking at the outdoor storage, um, but it's a steel industrial building. Uh, the plan commission reviewed the case um, at their hearing, uh, and developed these, the, the following findings of fact. Uh, which are in, keeping it in line with the, the standards for a conditional use. I mean, and last, um, they, they, they recommended a motion to approve uh, um, the conditional use of, um, for the outdoor storage. Um, for eight thirty-six Synthes Avenue, uh, supported by those documents that I showed you today, um, plus. Uh, the, the drainage letter that's been also included uh, with the application for the conditional use. Um, um, which ties back to uh, the Valani Industrial Park Stormwater Management Program. The uh, they did tie one uh, recommended condition to their recommendation. And that it would be that any storage within that fenced in area could not be taller than the building or thirty feet. So that, that's their recommendation and I, um, I present that to you uh, for any discussion or any questions. And uh, any modifications, the ordinance has been provided with you with my, uh, our draft ordinance has been provided to you with my report.
Okay, I'm sure there is gonna be plenty of questions. Councilmember Kimball?
What color is the building gonna be?
Hello, I'm Chandler Knop, I'm the owner of the property, so it's gonna be a darker gray and green, uh, same color that was approved for ABC Landscaping, uh, same building, same color.
Um, what, what's, what business is going there?
It's gonna be mostly service related, uh, we're building it for a tenant or to be leased out, so it's gonna be a, an industrial tenant for.
So is it a spec?
It's not a, a spec, it's. It, the property north is my cousins with ABC Landscaping, uh, so it's gonna be more of like an A, uh, landscaping or fiber optic. Sort of a holding facility.
And what, what is the, this, this is a conditional use, so is this. Turn, is there a time limit on how long things would be stored outside and what would we be expecting to be stored outside?
I don't believe there's a timeline um, associated with this.
Uh, the plan commission did not connect any other conditions other that, other than the materials that are stored there can't be taller than uh, thirty feet.
Thirty feet's three, three stories.
Yes.
As outdoor storage and we don't tip, we don't typically allow for that now, right? That's why it's conditional?
But no, it's conditional because it's outdoor storage, that's the only reason it's conditional, so the conditions can be, can, can, um, you can tie conditions to that. Um, uh, such as uh, fencing or screening, uh, tree, but we're, tree preservation's already built into the ordinance. So that's something that I would already be taking care of, um, uh, type of materials and timing, that's certainly up to you. Uh, plan commission, uh, um, when they heard the case, made the recommendation that uh, we could, um, that the landscape or the materials. Would be stored behind a, a six foot fence and that they could not be any taller than thirty feet.
So then they're really not screened in by anything.
I'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, of course.
So on the east side of the property, towards the subdivision, that was some of the feedback that we received from the neighborhood. Uh, we are not touching any of those trees at all on that entire screen, they're about twenty to twenty-five feet tall as they currently stand. And we putting a six foot fence in front of those trees, so really there is no visibility from the neighborhood into the lot. In addition, we're gonna be spading a majority of the trees to the outline of the perimeter. Uh, at a maximum of every twenty-five feet, more like every fifteen to twenty feet, and that's gonna create another buffer layer into the shop. So from the residential point of view, there really won't be any visible sightlines, especially given the height of those trees currently in place. And then the north and the south are, are industrial neighbors, uh, and then the west side is, is the street to the mountain. And the fence itself on the east side is also gonna be having slots on it. So there would be ground coverage with the slots and then into the twenty foot tall trees, uh, of which there are about two rows of them, so you're not gonna really see through at all.
Questions here?
First question, this, this, this will be for Dan. So. We have a potential drainage issue further down south of there. Is that, how does this play into all of that with the existing problem that we have?
Well, other than the letter that we've received uh, from their engineer, uh, that we have not gotten into any type of land development or uh. Uh, stormwater management uh, designed to make, to see which way the water is draining on the property. Uh, that will be handled, uh, and is typically handled during the construction document process.
Okay, and then as far as road surface in here, is this road base or asphalt or concrete?
It's gonna be compacted millings, uh, and if I may introduce the engineer for the project, this is Chad Kuzbeck, so he can speak to your drainage.
Okay, yeah, the drainage question would be good, because we've got maybe something to mitigate later on.
My name's Chad Kuzbeck, excuse me, West Works Engineering applicant on behalf of the property owner. I don't know what exactly what the drainage issue is offsite, um, obviously we can only control so much onsite. I can say that the development of this project is much lighter in terms of impervious area, building size, parking lot. And use than it would be allowed typically on an industrial site, you know, usually you'd see much more asphalt. Much bigger building, maybe some loading docks, what have you, um, so the majority of the site is remaining for all intents and purposes undeveloped. Um, a lot of natural ground, existing dirt, lots of trees, so the runoff from this site is much less than it could, could potentially be. If it was fully developed.
Okay, and then, so millings for the, for the road base, but um, then what happens? At Synthes, is there an apron going there or is this just gonna be millings all the way to Synthes?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be an access point of the millings out to match the pavement on Synthes. And then we have a roadside ditch that we're forming per the master drainage plan and we have a culvert under our access point for that.
Mayor, Mayor Partem King, uh, that, that they'll be required to comply with our street design standards and apron design standards, so. Um, I, I don't, I don't expect that it'll be millings up to our road, uh, there will be other standards that will be in, um. That will be required of them, uh, subject to our, our street, uh, street design standards that are in our code.
I just, you know, I don't wanna get into the same thing we've, we've got going on there and, you know, unfortunately. For them, it's, you know, they're under the, you're gonna be under the microscope now, because we have other issues in outdoor storage. Especially is concerning, um. You know, this is something that's not revenue producing for the town, but it's a giant code issue. Constantly, we have code violations that we've got to deal with too, so um.
Mm-hmm, but wouldn't this be zoned as? It's zoned already, right?
This property already is zone light industrial.
Okay, so they put one building, outdoor storage. Whoever the buyer is will be made to understand, because you're developing this and then you're gonna walk away and someone's gonna come in and lease it.
I'm gonna stay the owner.
You're gonna stay the owner, and so you won't be putting any other buildings up there without coming back to the town.
Correct. And I just actually wanted to introduce myself real quick, uh, my name's Chandler, uh, my father is Warren and mom's Deborah. Deborah moved to Monument seventy-eight, dad was here in eighty-eight, my three siblings went to Lewis Palmer, my mom went to Lewis Palmer. My dad uh, founded Prescott's Microscopes, which is now the largest manufacturing uh, for surgical microscopes in the world, for manufacturing. All that's here in Monument, so we are not outsiders coming in looking to make a buck, this is home, uh, we wanna do things right. Uh, my uncle is uh, Dean Kutcher, ABC Landscaping, he's been working with the town for thirty plus years. We have projects that we hope to do in the future and we don't wanna start a black eye now. Uh, so we're gonna do things right, we're gonna do them right the first time.
Okay, while you're standing up, would you be, would you have an objection to doing an eight foot fence that's screened?
There becomes load issues with structural engineering for the eight foot fence and also with the eight foot fence. Really, we have to look at the why it's going up for eight foot, and in my opinion, it'd be for sightline visibility for the residential. Eight feet won't accomplish anything because of those trees that were remaining in place, uh, the trees are starting at two to three feet above the ground. So really, you're just putting a fence. So really, you're just putting a fence, and then the trees are blocking that sightline anyway.
Okay. Is there a reason that you need 30-foot high of storage?
That's what was conditionally put on, because that's the height of what can be approved for a building. We have no intention of bringing cranes in. We will not be bringing cranes in. I shouldn't rephrase it that way. We're gonna-
Oh, no, there will be no more cranes.
There are no more cranes. So.
Well, what would be in there that would be tall? Do you have any idea? Because you haven't leased it out yet.
We, I, we cannot think of things that would be 30 feet tall. You think about the things that drive down the road, 30-foot tall is a big problem. So.
So 30 feet was a condition of yours or a condition of the planning commission's?
Planning commission.
That was, that was brought up by one of our Plan Commission members, and it just kind of stuck, so.
And you agreed, because you're going, we don't have anything 30 feet tall that's driving down the road.
And I, yes, and I also think that matching the height of the maximum building in a light industrial makes sense.
Okay.
30 feet's too tall for me, I'll just tell you that. This is a struggle because of the issues that we've had, and, and, you know, it was pretty much the same presentation before. So I'm just a little bit gun-shy, to be honest. I don't know what's going in here, and that's kind of where my head's at at the moment. We'll probably just have some, we'll have to deliberate this one a little bit, probably.
Okay, well, it is a public hearing item, because it is an ordinance. And so if the council's good, we will open the public hearing up to anybody who is currently in the room that would like to speak for or against this ordinance. I invite you to come down. Okay, not seeing anybody making a mad dash for the lectern. Will, do we have anybody online who would like to speak? Okay. Then we will close public hearing, and we will bring it back for those deliberations. What? Oh, oh, okay.
It's all right, come on up.
If you could, please sign in and make sure you state your name and area that you, you live in.
My name is Steve Decev. I live in Woodmore, and I'm a lighting factory representative. I just wanted to, just a quick education on lighting about dark sky.
Okay, hang on a second, sir. This is a public hearing item. You have to speak to the item. You have to give testimony. Is this-
Oh, I thought this was a free, I thought this was a-
No, no, this is-
Public comment will be at the end. No, we love to hear what you have to say, but it'll be a public comment.
Yeah. Okay. So now we're gonna close public hearing related to this item, and we will bring it back to the council to deliberate on, or discuss further before we get to any kind of vote. It's all good. We will have public comment. We do want to hear from you.
Yes, for sure.
Well, I, I am in the, I am in the mayor pro tem's camp. I'm having a hard time visualizing a 30-foot building, six-foot fence, 25-foot trees. You still have stuff that you can see. And there's no guarantee the trees are gonna be 25 feet. That's one. Two, I, I thought I heard you say something about relocating the trees. That never works. We know that, right? Don't, don't answer. Those are my two issues.
I think the point you're making on the trees is, you spade these trees that have been there for 30, 40, 60, 100 years. The chances of them being relocated and surviving is gonna be problematic. And then what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna come back from, and do the same caliper-sized tree, which is gonna be really hard to get and really expensive. So.
The trees that we're looking at spading are not the ones that have been there. They're, they're smaller diameter. All the trees that are really seven inches caliper or greater are staying. Most of those trees are on the east side anyway, the 20-plus footers. We're not touching those. The ones that are on the internal, we're not touching those either. Those stay. The ones that would be spaded, being that I'm, my cousin has the ABC Landscaping, and my uncle, I actually asked that question of their spading, and it is a, they have a 94% survival rate, given that the trees be properly watered with an underground watering, and it's all set up and staged properly, which is something that we would do. So anything that, that is spaded, we, we're confident that it will live. And if it's not, then we understand that we'll have to take care of that as part of the ongoing process. But our goal is to minimize the spadings altogether. And I realize if we have to cut something, then it must be replaced in accordance with the town code.
Really wish we had pictures of the site in the packet, so we could see something other than drawings. So I'd like to see the-
I, I can bring an aerial up very quickly, if that's something you're interested in. I mean, it's, it's heavily wooded, similar to the property to the north, and-
Yeah, I'm really familiar with it, is, you know, as long as those trees don't come down, it will help.
I, I want to mention that Chandler's actually came, proactively wanted to walk the site with us tonight, to make sure that they were marked. No, not you, not you. You're busy. But to walk out there and actually start marking trees and show things that are gonna be protected and saved. So I mean, they're, they're taking it very seriously, and they have since the beginning. I didn't want to go walk the site tonight simply because we hadn't been approved yet. But that will, we will be making sure that we don't have another error that we, that we have an example of, just to the south.
Sure. So while you're doing that, typically, our, our industrial screening would, would that comply with this, or is it different?
Industrial screening?
Yeah, if we, if we have any other industrial buildings that require screening, because a lot of them do. How would that be compatible with this?
Well, it's, it's a solid screening, because it's a chain, it's a six-foot, eight feet is typical for industrial. That's why our code allows for up to eight feet, but it could be different materials. I'm not sure there's a consistency across the board here in town, because we don't have a, we don't specify a wood fence or shadow box fence, box fence or chain link. So there's really nothing I could tie, say that this is what we do. When fencing is going up at like Falcon Commerce Center or the others, that those are solid wood fences. So there's, there, that's, that's a different type of, different, different style or quality, so to speak. So that's something that you can certainly consider. But eight feet is typically the height for an industrial site.
Eight feet? What, what about the visibility from the road on screening? I know there's something in here. I'm, I'm trying to look through it while you're doing this, but if you, if you know what that is.
Well, we have, the, the code itself speaks to site triangles and distances to make sure that, that as you're pulling out of the driveway, that, that someone's walking on the sidewalk or driving down the street, you, you'll be able to see them.
Right.
So that the code addresses that, and the eight feet or six feet is, is still, still the same site triangle as you're driving out. So we'll make sure that-
I wasn't really looking at site triangles, more of screening the materials that are behind the fence. I remember there was something in the code that addressed that, but I, I might be wrong, so I'm trying to look at that. While you're pulling that up, I'll see if I can find it.
Sorry, Will, I keep hanging up on you.
Are you just gonna bring Google?
Thank you.
Are you, are you just sharing your screen?
Yeah.
Dan, but Google Earth or something?
Yep. Not driving real. There you go. Bring up parcels too. Can you see it? Oh, it's good. There you go.
Yeah, it is. First tab.
So, and the parcels are kind of light, but you could see where the parcel is. It's right here.
So this, this has framing begun on this building?
No, it's, yeah, it's-
Right, it's just the building, right?
That has the framing, approved by the city.
That's different from this lot?
Oh, so it's a different building?
Yeah, so that, that's, that's this parcel right here to the north is where ABC Landscaping is, and that was approved about three years ago. We're working with-
I wonder why I don't remember. It's because they ripped out all those trees.
It, it was approved through site plan or site plan approval. So it wouldn't have gone before you. The, this one in here is the property in question. You can see the, there's uneasement and an access point throughout through the site. There's the trees, the trees in question are at the north, the north corner. And they're looking at removing, or preserving, I should say, these trees over here, and then relocating the trees around the perimeter of the property. And then the fence would go all the way around.
It's like a third of the property is covered in trees. You're gonna move them to the perimeter as part of the screening? That's the plan? But it's gonna be the, obviously, the interior part, because the exterior is gonna remain on both the north and the east side?
I would like to hear like specific-
So.
I, I have- Go ahead, please. Last weekend I came, I actually am, I'm actively military. I'm stationed in Portland right now. Hopefully get to come back soon, but I flew out last weekend to go through this. I counted every tree. Every tree got a tape measure to it at least twice. And every tree that's greater than six inches was marked with flagging tape. So after I went through there, I counted. So there's 50 trees with flagging tape. Of those 50, about 30 of those are not being touched. Most of those are gonna be along the perimeter on the east side and the north side. The other remaining 20 are the ones that we're looking to spade. Those spades are gonna come and put on the south side of the property, as well as fit in on the east side of the property where there's vacant trees to that east side. As well as gonna move some to the west side, create a full boundary around the promise or the perimeter.
Did that answer what you're looking for?
Then, then that tree preservation will, it will be reviewed by me. It's under, under the code. It's my, it's my job to make sure that we're preserving trees and and no trees are supposed to be, no trees are to be removed without my approval. So I'll be looking through that. And one of the reasons, again, why I didn't walk the site with him tonight is because I wanted to make sure that you were okay with the, the conditional use for the outdoor storage.
And we have a guarantee that you're gonna be employed here for the next 100 years?
100 years?
99.
Okay, if I can live that long, I'll be here.
Okay, so on this, on the screening part of this, in industrial uses, it says, you know, it talks about fences and berms and all that. And then it says additionally, the following specific uses or features of any industrial use shall be screened so as not to be visible from adjacent property or from public right-of-way. And then it talks about dumpsters and utilities and loading docks and storage materials, stocks and equipment, and outdoor freezers. So how do you read that as far as what they could be able to store there height-wise?
Again, I would have read that as the height of the fence. But that Plan Commission added the condition that it couldn't be taller than 30 feet.
So the code is basically saying height of the fence, and the planning commission is saying not higher than 30 feet?
And, and I want to make it very clear, it wasn't because they, they were doing it in spite of the ordinance. That was just in their conversation, they, they wanted to limit it to whatever the building height was. They just hadn't, they hadn't seen that specific detail.
So if the height of the fence was eight feet, then it would be eight-foot storage?
That would be my interpretation, yes.
From my point of view, I think we need to follow the code.
Yeah, I, I would. I would like to get more detail, because you're saying approximately 20 trees are gonna be spaded and being moved. Yet, is that adequate? Is that an adequate number of trees to cover the remaining eastern boundary and southern boundary?
It is, yes. I took a 300-foot measure.
You did. I appreciate, and I appreciate that, but our staff hasn't. So that's why I'm, I'm leaning towards-
I don't think it's our, well, I mean, we're not gonna start sending staff out to measure trees.
I just don't think there's a lot of detail in here about, you know, that, that's why I'm trying to get more-
Yeah, I would-
Or more definition to almost go to the point of, why don't we continue this till we get more details, more data, and then come back and say, yes, because I, I'm in, I'm, I'm up in the odds with the 30-foot restriction as well, regardless, regardless of the trees going around the border, because that's opening up other concerns that may arise. Because we, there is no guarantee. You, you, and you're doing a great job, don't get me wrong. But all the, the things could change, where now you're gonna get pressed to put cranes in there or something else, because you're going to, the space is gonna be put up for rent, if you will, by different users. And that, that's another concern that I have.
Well, I mean, I think that was the purpose of, of the Plan Commission's purpose of putting a height limitation on storage. At least there's their gut reaction to that. So, I mean, they, this is a draft ordinance that can be, there can be modifications to it. It's just they're, they made a recommendation to you, and you have the ability to make changes to that ordinance. I'm more, I'm less concerned about the trees in that I will make sure that the trees are preserved and that we, that we're not chopping down trees just for the sake of chopping them down. And as I said before, Chandler's been actually very cooperative and open to those conversations. I'm, I'm more interested in making sure that whatever's being stored out there isn't gonna become a nuisance, a nuisance to the neighborhood, to the, to the east, and then problematic to the other properties in the industrial park.
What was the no vote? Reason? Was there a reason given for the no vote?
No, there was no reason.
So it was five to one?
It was the chair.
The chair voted no? That guy.
Yeah, really. I have a question. The property on the, I guess it would be the northeast side where the houses are, topographically, is it higher? In other words, do those homes look down on the property?
I don't believe so. I think it's just-
HOA, it's literally, well, I don't live on that side, but when I was on the HOA, I heard tons of complaints, and this is nothing against your proposal. I am concerned about the height of the building, just because, like I said, when I was on the board, the cranes still continue to be a problem, right? And the trees that were removed, I don't think I would, I don't know how I would feel. I think this needs a little bit of tweaking. And, I mean, is there a way to get feedback? What are the neighbors gonna be seeing if we don't know what kind of rent, renter that's gonna use that building or how high it needs to be? That's my concern. And, and how it affects the neighbors across the way.
I don't know if this is like a negotiation, so I don't want to approach it as such, but if we were to conditionally approve this, to put nothing higher than the head of the trees, and that fixes the problem. As the owner, I'll ensure that whoever goes in there does not put anything higher than the trees. We'll put that as a part of our lease agreement. There's your site product. It doesn't go above the trees, so that's 20, 20 feet in the back, up to 25 feet. I'll call it 20 feet. And that, some of the trees are 25. So that there will be no sightlines over the top.
And just to, to be clear, the trees are gonna be against the road? They're gonna be?
The railroad track on the east side.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's railroad track, that gray area with the stripe.
Yes, that's. Like the homes, will they still be able to see the building, I guess?
The buil, the building's only 15 or so.
The, the bill, again, the building is not in question. The, the building actually is in compliance with our, our, our code standards for building height. Um, we don't have code standards for materials or colors when it comes to this. Um, it's really about the, uh, the outdoor storage, screening and outdoor storage, the impact of the outdoor storage on the area. Um, so it's the, the height of the material or is it screened properly? Um, that's really what's in question.
So you mentioned possibility of fiber optics. We could have spools of orange. Two tubes sitting out there. That's used for conduit for fiber optics. That's one of the things that you. You're basically giving as an example that could be there.
That's correct, but anything that goes there would have to have an approved site plan through the town. So this comes into. We would have to give approval to for things.
Yeah, they. Let's try though. Um, yeah, so the, I mean, we're not going to have, we're, you don't want us to oversee what you're bringing onto the property or what type of businesses are in there as long as they're in, they're a use that are permitted by that district. Uh, so. I do too, uh, and I don't have the staff. I'm not going to do that. So, um, the, uh, but setting a limitation on height or location for, uh, for the storage. That, that's really what we're talking about is, and, and right now they're showing it, um, over the, where there are no, the, the. The outdoor storage is actually where there are no trees and that's, um, if you looked on the map, there's a, the rectangle, it's to, it's to the south of the building. Uh, so, um. Uh, and they are preserving as many, those heavy, bigger trees as they can on the property. Um, so, uh, if. He's proposing that he's going to take some of those trees and relocate them to the back property line to provide additional screening. If you want to provide additional, um, conditions to make sure that we don't have a 30 foot tall crane. Back there, that's, that's certainly up to, up to you, uh, in the, in however you want to work in the ordinance.
Okay.
I think, I think we just follow what our existing code says. Um, it talks about screening. It could, the fence could be eight feet.
Well, we, so that's a, that's an interesting point. So the, if he were, he were to put in an eight foot fence, he still might have a vehicle back there, a truck that will be taller than eight feet. Uh, so, and that's probably not reasonable for us to tell them to build it, an outdoor garage around a truck that might be back there. Uh, so I mean, maybe there's a, if you were to make the, say, we're going to follow the code and say it can't be taller than eight feet with, with the exception of vehicles. Uh, without ladders extending up or whatever, however you want to do it, and we can make sure that it's defined.
I mean, it, it doesn't address, the screening doesn't address vehicles. It addresses dumpsters. Utility facilities, loading docks, storage, material stocks, equipment, I guess, equipment you could consider, but it wouldn't, I wouldn't consider that a truck equipment. And outdoor freezers. It does, I don't, I mean, I don't see where it has a vehicle. Restriction in here.
So, um, so just for clarity sake, why not, um, the, if it with his.
I just don't want, I don't want a bunch of pallet stacked up and, you know, all kinds of other stuff like where we have now.
So if he were to agree to an eight foot fence and then we would say, and the other condition would be, and I wouldn't refer to the code. I would actually just spell it, just repeat it right in the ordinance, just the way it's written. Um, but that's the condition. Um, and write down that, that section that you just read out and, uh, would that satisfy? Would, would that be something you would be willing to approve?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really that concerned about vehicles as long as they're not cranes. But just normal storage because things that get stored outside in an industrial area tend to be quite junky.
So for, for his sake, could you read that section one more time so he understands? And then, um, if they include that and then he can tell you whether he wants to raise the fence or not.
Okay. It says, you know, the first part, I'm not going to read because it just talks about what can be screened. It could be a, you know, fence wall. Landscaping berm, natural buffer, um, whatever. And then it says additionally, the following specific uses or features of any industrial use shall be screened. So as not to be visible from adjacent property or from public right of way. And that's when it lists dumpsters and trash handling, service entrance and utility facilities, loading docks and spaces. Storage, material stocks and equipment and outdoor freezers.
It's really the end. That's that last section. It says that you can't have anything taller than the fence. It's 100% screen, so. If we were to add, that is the condition and you decide if it's a six foot fence or an eight foot fence. They might be, uh, be open to approving the condition is.
I think, uh, it would be dependent on the tenant and if it requires an eight foot, then that's the ordinance. So we just say it's approved at six and if the tenant is. Going to fall in one of those categories, then it goes up to eight.
Yeah, I'm not going to require you to put an eight foot fence in. It's just, but we can go, we can go up to eight. Is it any higher than we can go than that? Eight feet? Okay, so we could, he could go up to eight feet. So he wouldn't have to come to us to get approval. Okay.
So you have a, a modification that you want to put in the ordinance?
Well, might be just eliminate both of those conditions and just rely on the ordinance.
What's that?
Yeah, well, I still like the idea of calling out that, that, that specific text in the ordinance so that it's clear. Uh, but the, uh, if you eliminate the six foot. He could still go up to, even though it says six feet, he could still go up to eight feet later. So I don't, I'm not sure that we need to even refer to that.
Yeah, that, we, we, we have the ability to go to eight feet. If he wants to do it at six feet.
Right.
That's not an issue.
Or in fours, eight feet.
Yeah. And, and the screening is built into the. The ordinance, correct?
I just wanted to make sure it's super clear that in the ordinance itself, for the condition I use that they're complying with that piece, that it's 100% screened from those views. Uh, so that way, when I am gone in a hundred years, someone can read that ordinance or when someone's doing their due diligence and renting the site that they know what they can put back there.
Do we, do we also need to make the add modification that we're re relocating a minimum of 20 trees?
Uh, as depicted, yes, we could, you can put that in there. Are you comfortable with that?
It would just be what you've.
Well, we have, yeah, what we have in there. Yeah, it, uh, I think that direction's pretty clear, but we can put, we can say preserving at least 20 trees.
The ordinance is very specific as it is as far as six inch caliper down to two and a half inches. It's very spelt out. So I recommend it just be followed per the ordinance. Cause that's what's driving my count as it is, uh, which is very specific.
I'm, I'm good with that. So we would, we would have to modify section two for the approval. Um, and remove the condition of not to exceed 30 feet. Think that whole section. Mr. Cole, are you following along with this?
I am.
So.
So what you've said so far.
Okay, good. Um, is there any other section that? To create, so the trees you're already, you're already tracking.
I'm already doing that.
Based on the, uh, existing ordinance and the, the, what's in the. So it's just basically the height, take the height out and follows the code. All right. Council, everybody on council, good with that? Marco, you've been quiet?
I'm good with it.
You're good with the removal of the condition?
Yes, um, I, that, that was, I, I found that, um, a little weird myself. Um, so I, I think if we just remove that condition and, and, uh, and apply the, the, the standards, I think we're good. And I, and I do like what, what the applicant did with, uh, with the trees and what, what, what they intend to do. So. It sounds, it sounds like he's got the, the, uh, inside track on, on moving trees and. Making them, um. Survive, so. I'm happy.
Okay, well, um. Looking at the language, town council proves the conditional use for outdoor storage, eight, there, three, six, and these. Um. Condition upon items stored within the approved outdoor storage area shell. What? Just are we removing it from where it says the condition to 30 feet in height? Just remove that section?
Yeah, we removed the 30 feet.
I would, I would recommend a motion to approve ordinance 10, 2025 with the deletion in section two. Of the clause that begins conditioned upon and ending. With 30 feet in height.
Okay.
I think that would get it.
So we, and then we don't need to reference the. The existing code or not?
If you want that specific reference in there, you, you could. I mean, it's going to apply regardless.
It's going, it's okay. So it's going to apply whether we put it in there or not.
Right, that's right.
Okay, then we'll just remove the 30 feet.
Go ahead, make the motion that if, if we're done discussing, then we'll look for a motion.
All right, then I'll make the motion to approve ordinance. 10, 20, 25, an ordinance granting conditional use approval for outdoor storage at eight, 36 Centi's Avenue. Um, with the following modification that on section two, the height restriction or. I guess it's, it's more, it's, it's an allowance. The height allowance goes away and, um, is subject to the code. As I'll just list it, as 18 and 18 dot zero four dot one five zero industrial uses.
Okay, hang on a second. Let's make sure. Tina got that.
Eighteen dot zero four dot one five zero industrial uses.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. You couldn't, you're on the wrong tab. Hang on one second. Got two of the same tab up. You're missing. You have three of the same tab up.
It means you could pull three times.
Yeah, through all three systems.
You can just tell me your vote.
What?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that motion passed six to zero. So.
Uh, thank you. I know how sensitive this issue was and how difficult it was for you to take a look at that and, uh, given the light of other experiences in this area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, next on the agenda is. Resolution 37, 2025, resolution approving the awarding of a construction contract to Native Sun Construction. To remove iron from our wells number 11, 12, and 13. Okay, Mr. Darnish.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. The resolution you have in front of you tonight is to award a construction contract to Native Sun Construction. To install and, or to install an iron removal system at wells 11, 12, and 13. And the background paper had described that when these wells were first drilled. And started to be put in service that we noticed iron levels were climbing. And so we thought we could flush it out. We flushed it out for quite a while. And in the end, we didn't see a decrease. And we started getting complaints from the houses that were nearest to those wells. That they were tasting metallic and smelling the iron and so forth. So once that happened, we stopped running the wells. We, the staff, the senior staff and water conducted a pilot study to determine what type. Filtration we would need to remove those. And once it was determined, uh, what micron level we would need. Then we turned it over to the engineers to design that installation and got ahold of the state. To confirm that, um. They're com, or they're, uh, they would agree with the changes that would be needed. And so we developed an RFP and sent that out. We had, uh, two bidders that bid that project. We actually had a lot more companies come to the pre-bid meeting. And looked at it, but in the end there were only two that, that actually bid it. And I believe in this, there is also the, um. Well, I can't remember if it's in the package or not, but anyway, there's a bid tab that shows the, the numbers of both bidders. So tonight we're asking for approval of this resolution. For, to award a contract to naval, native sun construction for a total amount of, uh, 582,000. Two forty-one. And what that includes is the bid price and then we added a 10% contingency, which is what we've been doing the last couple of projects. That's just to ensure that. We do have things that come up and we had a project last year where. Uh, we ended up having to do a different type of valve installation than what was planned. And we had to do it in a hurry because we had the whole 12 inch line along Beacon Light Road isolated with that. Um, so anyway, that's what the project is about and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Oh, the first question is not to exceed?
Yes.
So.
Thought I'd put that in there.
Five eighty-two, two forty-one with the built-in contingency will not go over and. Um, the, the contract native son realizes they will have to complete the work without. Any more money coming to them if this. Goes over.
Well, yes, it will be a not to exceed contract and, uh.
I have the contract in here, right? Or is it not drafted yet?
No, we don't draft them until it's, uh, the amount is approved.
So then you'll come back and ask, you'll request us to. Approve the contract?
Normally we don't come back once a project is approved.
Well, without a contract, this resolution will not go anywhere because I need to see the language of the contract that specifically states, as does the council, that this will not exceed the five eighty-two. It has to be in the contract.
Well, you could make it a condition.
Well, it's a resolution. It's not an ordinance. So. All I have is a piece of paper to sign that says we approved a resolution. It's not the same as a contract. And I, and, and if it's 582,000, I'm the one who signs the contract.
Right.
So I would have to go through and read all that when it gets to us. Or it gets to me and I get called up and says, come down here and sign this. I need to know that it's going to say not to exceed.
Hold on a second.
So this, this.
Yep.
Probably it wasn't budgeted for, or it was it budgeted?
It, it didn't have its own line item, but it was attached as a, as a result of the new construction of the wells. So it still falls under the two A.
Okay.
Project of the original well construction.
I mean, we've been hearing about the removal of it for the last several, several months.
I know, I know we've been talking about.
So it's never budgeted technically.
So Mr. Cole, do you have a? Suggestion on how we could handle this tonight without having to come back?
Manager's office with specific issues of focus. Um, you could ask that the contract come back.
I thought the.
Mr. Darnish, do you see any problems with the wording with the NTE?
No, we do not. Uh, we have, uh, normally when a contractor is approved, you have the engineering company do the. Reference checks, the financial background. I mean, this is a local construction company right here in Monument. Uh, they've been multiple projects over the years. They just were never low enough to, to win. So this is a great success for them. And, um. The whole amount, amount again was. Was based on, uh, a lot of, uh, piping that has to be added because once you install filtration. It changes the, the flow rates and the state required a certain amount of contact time. For the chlorine to do its disinfection work. So that's what drove the cost up is we had to go to larger piping to slow the water down. Run it up so many feet, turn it around, bring it back in, into the wellhouse. So it was a pretty involved RFP.
These are rapo wells. Is that why?
Uh, no, these are Denver Basin wells.
Oh, and it still has a lot of iron.
They're just at the very bottom of that area. It's just. It's unfortunate because all three of them are in different locations. But the same problem arose to a, to a different level, but enough where. If you ran this water into our system, we, we couldn't run it for very long without getting a, a, a lot of complaints. And, and we do pride ourselves on. And and we do pride ourselves on establishing pretty high level of water quality.
Is that is that a result of the the aquifers depleting over time? Does that make it worse, or is it just the luck of the draw?
I think it's just uh a lot of it has to do with luck where you drill these wells. And uh they're all fairly close in depth. They're at the bottom of the Denver, the Denver Basin. And um it's a, it's the first time we've had wells that are kind of in that in that depth area where we've had to add filtration to. Other wells we have that are similar, uh, water quality comes out really well. Iron levels are almost negligible. And we just chlorinate them and put them right into the system. But unfortunately, these rose to the level where within a short period of time, uh, we got our first complaint and so we thought we could isolate and flush. But after flushing for hours, realized that the levels didn't drop enough to to make a difference.
And what is this going to reduce it down to? Like, what's with with the mitigation that gets done? Is this going to go down to zero iron or?
Uh, pretty close. Uh, our pilot study showed that based on the filtration that we're going to put in, uh, we can drop it down uh as low as we can get it without going to a much more expensive sophisticated system. And the um, the levels iron, we we have an administrative limit that we don't allow any water to go above because we know it will generate complaints. So we try to stay well below that level on all of our wells, all of our filter plants.
And is that something that's in the contract also that the the layer, the the equipment that you're you're putting in, does it come with some guarantees of what those levels will be, or is it settings that you have to put in place with the equipment?
Probably the micron.
It's it's been, yeah, they're micron type filters. They're uh
So the cartridge filter system then?
Yes.
Okay.
And you you do have the ability to change this, but this is what it's being designed to uh based on the pilot study and having the engineers uh confirm the results. So that we, once we do this, we're we're in a good spot. It should give us exactly what uh, what we need to utilize these walls.
Well, I get why not wanting to have it come back, but I I could have sworn when we updated our contract and purchasing policy that this does not, this is not something we hand off.
That that's what we're actually looking to review.
Okay, I I'm pretty sure we don't hand it off to, I mean, I don't have a problem with us saying, hey, Bob, will you review this and make sure it meets? But we we set criteria um before we updated the purchasing policy. And it the contract should have been in here along with you you did an RFP and you awarded a contract, basically.
Well, we we always say it's awarded depending on the town council approving contract. We don't, we don't award it.
We don't have a contract to look at.
Right. Well, we also have uh bonding and insurance documents that would normally follow. Everything has to be in place before we'd ever issue notice to proceed on these contracts.
So what you just, you just want to see it when it comes back? I mean, because
I'm not approved, I'm, I can't consciously vote for a half a million dollar project without seeing what the contract stipulates.
Well, I think I think if we approve it, because he's he can't do it anyway, and then he brings a contract back and and then it's reviewed. Is that? I mean, I think that's what I heard Mr. Cole say, that it could run through him or Madeline, and we could see it.
It, the contract at that level runs through the council, not through town staff.
Right, but he can't even write the contract up until he gets approval for the amount of money to do it. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Well, we went through this exercise. I just want to be clear from from council what what we agreed upon. Uh, it was over a year ago, if I'm not mistaken. Just give us a second, Tom, so we can just figure this out.
Sure.
Okay, can I ask a quite quick question? Sorry.
Of course. Oh, of course. I forgot you were there, Marco.
No, wow. Um, I'm I'm with Mitch on this one. I I'm, when I first saw this on the agenda, I thought this was a resolution to start the proceedings, which then would lead to us approving the contract when it came to us again. Uh, so I'm I'm a little confused that I really want to see the contract before it gets signed. Am I misunderstanding the process or the the sequence here? Oh.
Mr. Cole?
Oh, I believe with the amended and restated contract purchasing policy that was I think the effective date was March four twenty twenty four for expenditures over twenty five thousand dollars. The town council is both the contract and purchase order approval and signature authority. So I think you're right. You should see a contract.
Now, um, I know I had a birthday and I'm starting to forget things, but I got that one right.
So so this is a resolution to begin contract proceedings with a
Well, I think if we approve this, the contract still has to come back. That's basically what the gist is. So we can approve the dollar amount and then then the contract will come back to us for a review, and then we can approve the contract separately, and then someone can write a check.
Is that doable, Tom?
Right.
For us to proceed that way?
If that's the direction of the council, yes, we'll we'll make it.
I think, yeah, the contract is important.
Okay, any other questions about the resolution uh and the the process?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just just to clarify, I am looking at a draft of that policy, so I need to find the final. And if there's any modifications to what I just said, I'll get back to the group. Okay?
Okay. All right, any motions to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve resolution thirty seven dash twenty twenty five, approving the awarding of a construct construction contract to native sun construction for the iron removal project at wells eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second. Motion a second. Everybody find your screen. You found it.
See?
All right, that motion passes six to zero. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Darnish. Uh, we'll move on to resolution thirty eight twenty twenty five, resolution to approve salary structure classifications for non sworn and sworn positions. Mr. Hero. And there's an true, there's an unknown too. I don't even know who that is.
Introduction coming shortly. Mayor, council members, good evening. Uh, thank you for your patience. Um, just want to briefly speak to the resolution. We want to move forward and approve the salary structures and classifications for both our sworn and non sworn employees. Uh, we have went with a third party agency. That is the gentleman right behind me. He will be up here momentarily to present the process. Uh, really looking forward to this. Long time coming. Um, I'm going to keep it short because he does have a good wealth of information, so I don't want to repeat anything that he says. Um, it is, I'll let him introduce himself.
All right, why don't we, we'll take, we'll take five. You've got five. All right, folks, we're back from recess. We are going to go through a presentation. Laura, is yours?
Thank you for your patience. I do own that. That was my bad to not get that to Will in time. Um, and we will continue. The gentleman from CBIZ will introduce himself, have a short presentation, and then we will just have a discussion around the resolution.
Awesome. Mayor and council, thanks for having me. Next slide, please. Uh, my name is Taylor Sprague. I'm a lead consultant and project manager for the Town of Monuments Compensation Project. Um, I focus on Colorado State broad-based pay plans. And I have my CCP license up and doing studies like this day in and day out for going on eight years now. And I'm an active member in the R M T R A and work out of the Denver Tech Center, CBIZ office. Uh, next slide, please. A quick about CBIZ. We are a public company for professional services traded on New York Stock Exchange. You can think of CBIZ as a really a three pillar business plan between tax accounting and consulting. And so our CBIZ compensation consulting team falls within that consulting pillar. Um, next slide, please. So we are a national CBIZ practice. We have a team of exclusive compensation projects and staff that only only work on compensation related matters. And so we have extensive experience working in the public sector, and I won't go through each of these, but just put a list of a few of our our recent clients over the past year um over to the right. Next slide, please. Quick overview of our presentation. So I'm going to walk through our methodology, process and steps, get into our recommendations and ultimately answer any questions. Next slide, please. And one more. So a few elements that go into the start of one of these projects are the first three labor market influences that you'll see. So the size, geography and industry. When we go out to the marketplace, we want to think of these as really the the major influences that go into a study like this. So first being the size, we're using that budget of just under twelve million dollars. Really, operating budget is going to be focused more on executive level pay as you work your way down the organization or municipality uh becomes less relevant. So where relevancy did matter there, we did focus on that operating budget. And about eighty employees. Geography focusing on on local um monument here. And industry, we're looking pretty broad, just the different workforces that go into the town here. Uh, we're focusing on a broad all industry approach. Next up in the analysis is where do we want to place ourselves in the marketplace? So we are, or you could think of this as a market philosophy. We're utilizing that market fiftieth percentile based salary. So this is where fifty percent of organizations pay above these data points, fifty percent paid below. And we're using this in aggregate to create our salary structures and implementation plan. From there, we can
Stop for one second. Is there a way we can minimize the uh audience, the the online audience boxes off the the way, can we minimize that, please? It's on the right hand side of the screen. It's 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 blocking some of the uh the text as it goes by. Can't click a mouse? Thank you. Okay, sorry for the interruption. I was just, you went through another screen and part of the text was missing.
No problem. Yeah, could we go up just to the prior slides briefly? Thank you. Last element there, when we uh figure out that market philosophy, we can go to our market analysis step, which first we're going to evaluate the job documentation. So as a part of the project, we evaluated all job descriptions, financial statements to then utilize our market data of which we're utilizing the job descriptions to go to that market data and find appropriate market matches of which, when you find those, you can then aggregate and pull appropriate market data on a position by position basis. We're aging that survey data to look ahead. So salary data is historic in nature. We can't look ahead to what salaries will be, right? So we're aging those appropriately uh to a common focal point to get that apples to apples comparison. And then we can summarize the results um as our last step. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, next step in the analysis is creating the salary structure. So what you see on the screen is the general structure is what it's termed, or the uh, non police structure. Essentially, what you'll see is proposed sixteen salary grades, each with a minimum midpoint and maximum. You'll see two columns of calculations there, the range spread and midpoint differential. Those are just the percent changes and the range spread is the percent changes in maximum to minimum. Midpoint differential is the percent change in midpoint to midpoint as you work your way from grade to grade. Purpose of a salary structure, we want to simplify the ongoing compensation administration um on an annual or biannual basis. The salary structure does integrate that external market data as well as internal equity considerations. And then the minimum and midpoint maximum each serve a purpose as well. Each job has a salary grade. And within those minimums, midpoints and maximums, the minimum is going to be that attractive entry level pay for jobs in that appropriate grade. Midpoint's going to approximate that market fiftieth percentile or compensation philosophy data point. The maximum is going to be that top out pay on a position by position basis. Highlights from what was in place versus what you see today and what we've recommended, uh narrower ranges and just more grades for additional flexibility moving forward. And next slide, please. The next structure you see here is the police officer, sworn officer structure. So same design is what's been in place, just some minor tweaks. Uh, the officer and corporal is still the uh seven steps which still can approximate a minimum midpoint and maximum range spread of thirty seven percent. So each step is still a six percent change until that grade seven or step seven, rather. And then sergeant through chief still remains job based ranges individually with open minimum midpoints and maximums. And one of the goals was still to back into and maintain that maximum from the prior uh level to uh your next rank of that five percent. And so you'll see that built in right next to the range spread as well. General trends is just overall increase in not only the steps, but the ranges. So those minimums and maximums. And then calculations that you'll see in terms of implementation for officers are rounding years of service to that July one twenty twenty five to determine appropriate step. Next slide, please. So how grades are placed into the general salary structure? So it's a rounding process and you can term it as a market forward approach. So when we aggregate our market data, we're utilizing that market philosophy data point or fiftieth percentile to then go to our salary structure and say which salary range midpoint most closely aligns that job simply rounds into that salary grade. And so our example for job title X Y Z has a market fiftieth percentile benchmark data point of thirty five thousand, call it five hundred. Uh, we go to our salary structure of three grades in this example, and we find the midpoint that it most closely aligns to. Uh, easy rounding process to the thirty five six, the job simply rounds into grade two. So what you get when you do this from jobs top to bottom, you get grades that are contained of uh jobs of similar market value, right? And then the final um adjustments there are looking at internal equity. While we're rounding and looking at a data forward approach, we want to evaluate to say, does this make sense if we have um jobs A, B, and C in this grade? Does that make sense internally? So we look, we work through those reviews as well. Uh, next slide, please. On this visual, this is a employee range penetration for the general salary structure excluding the town manager. The blue line on the left represents the proposed salary range minimum. The blue line on the right represents the salary range maximum. You can't see it here, but the middle line where the grades are uh addressed is the salary range midpoint. And each green dot represents an employee at the town. So what you see is majority of employees are within the proposed salary ranges. We do have a few to the left side or just below the salary range minimum. That would be a recommendation to at least bring those employee salaries up to that salary range minimum. Those on the right side above the salary range maximum, our recommendation would be to provide a lump sum salary increase in lieu of a percentage increase to those salaries. At some point, we will be updating the salary structures uh whenever the formal processes of which those minimums, midpoints and maximums will increase, although we're giving those salaries a lump sum, they're not compounding. Eventually, the structure will catch them. They'll be eligible for a salary increase at that date. Next slide, please. Financial impacts for the general structure excluding the town manager. So we have an overall average comp ratio of ninety eight point two percent. That's taking every employee's salary divided by that market comparison point or the fiftieth percentile and then averaging. So you could, and averaging all of those together in aggregate, and you can see about two percent below uh that market fiftieth percentile. High level costs are the six employees we just saw were below those salary range minimums, comes out to six employees, about eighteen and a half thousand dollars or zero point five percent of payroll. We have the four employees above the salary range maximums at twenty two and a half thousand dollars or zero point six percent of payroll. We did run a compression analysis, which for those unfamiliar with compression, this is an issue of which new hires come in who are less tenured and receive pay very similar or even potentially exceeding those with significantly more tenure. And so we did run a compression analysis and found twelve employees um in that compression kind of red And so we did run a compression analysis and found 12 employees um, in that compression kind of red flag zone, if you will. That comes out to a $38,000 cost or 1% of payroll. And how we're determining that cost is calculate calculating appropriate range penetration based on that time in job. Total implementation would be 12 employees, 56 and a half thousand dollars or 1.5% of payroll. Again, this is just for the general structure excluding the town manager position. Next slide, please. On the sworn officers analysis, we had a 92.4% comp ratio. So on average, uh, a little below 8% in terms of that uh, market comparison point or market 50th percentile. For below step or salary range minimum for the officers, we had 20 employees below or forty-four and a half thousand dollars, 1.8% of payroll. And we had one employee above the maximum at just under $12,000 or 0.5% of payroll. Next slide, please. So in summary, putting all the pieces together, we have the six employees below minimum in the general structure, the 20 below in the sworn structure and the 12 employees eligible for the compression increase again in the general structure. In total, we have 32 employees who would be recommended a salary increase that comes to $101,000, 1.6% of payroll in total. Next slide, please. Our post increased range placement for the general structure, again excluding the town manager is to say, thanks CBIZ, if we did adopt your implementation plan, what would that look like visually? What you'll see, and it's a little difficult to see, is we've now put circles around those uh, solid dots to say this is where the employees would be if you did adopt this implementation plan. And essentially what uh, you'll notice is those hollowed circles are all within the salary range proposed salary ranges of which we have no below minimum, and you'll actually see some hollowed out circles a little farther showing that compression increase recommendation. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, one more. Uh, some quick recommendations, we've touched on most of these if we went through, but adopting the proposed pay structures for both the general and sworn officers. Uh, it's taking into account that external market analysis we did as well as the internal equity review we did with the project team. Uh, increasing the salaries for any of the employees below the proposed salary range minimums, we would say that minimum level is that attractive level pay where they would be at risk of losing due to pay alone. And then consider the compression adjustments. They are a, it's a one time right the ship analysis on the compression study. You're not going to do a compression analysis every year or every other year. This is sort of a a one time right the ship uh, implementation plan of which the increase, the minimum is most important and let's consider the compression after we've done that. Uh, next slide, please. As a result of our engagement in this analysis, we will provide you an annual salary planning letter for the next five years free of charge. It's going to be three to five pages of what we're seeing in terms of cost of labor in the market, given your labor market influences. There's going to be two really important elements in that letter, which one is going to be what we're recommending you update the salary ranges by as a percentage. Again, we don't want to implement salary structures and leave them stagnant from year to year. Otherwise, we're just kind of backtracking on the work we've done prior. So we'll provide you a recommendation of what to increase those minimums, midpoints and maximums by. The second important item is a recommended salary increase budget percentage. So what are we seeing in the market, given your size, location and industry of what costs are going to be for providing increases for all employees in Monument? And next slide, please. That's all I have for you guys today. And I don't know if there's any questions. I provided some information if anything comes up um, at a later date, but happy to answer any that come to mind.
Questions? You're not, yeah, thank you.
No, thank you very much. Great job. Um, does this also look at the compensation for pension and healthcare and stuff like that as well?
So benefits analysis was not included um, in the scope of this study?
Does it include anything that talks to performance? Or is this strictly a data just?
Yeah, so that the performance would come into place on the compression analysis, which essentially would be a hurdle if you're not at least hitting a certain level of performance. If it's a three out of five, you would be ineligible for a compression increase. In terms of the below minimum, it's not taking that into account. It's just a market rate of which they're assigned to a salary range and the performance on an individual basis doesn't come into effect there. But of course, if it's a policy of which um, you need to have a certain level of performance, that would be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
I've got several questions. Um, on your chart that shows um, the grade one minimum.
Yep.
That was a pretty low salary.
Yep.
Um, and it it would appear that we have people making below that dollar amount now? Where is that dollar amount compared to the poverty level?
I'm not sure I could answer that for you in terms of the poverty level for the town of Monument specifically.
That national general poverty level.
Oh, it's going to be above, certainly above.
That 34, 35, whatever that number was.
Correct.
And also that position is a 30 to 32 hour work week. So it is a, that is why the salary is smaller. That is not the full time 40 hours a week position.
Okay.
I get what your question is.
Are there other positions like, because that really would concern me. That dollar amount is woefully low for when compared to the poverty level.
That is the only one.
Okay. Who are we compared to? What, because you can't compare us to um, uh, the local car dealership or um, a manufacturing plant or yes, the McDonald's. So when you're going through your points, are you also gaining access to, let's say, the CML studies that are looking at all of the financial data that's submitted voluntarily by municipalities across the state or are you looking at other states? What, how are you getting your data points to compare to?
Yes, so good question. We are not evaluating CML local public data. We're utilizing large databases that house thousands of data points. So ERI, comp analysts, pay factors are some of those sources. They just, it's a big filtering process. We can go to your location. Um, geography and size is going to filter down to find benchmark matches. And so it's thousands of companies, organizations, municipalities that are participating in these databases that that data comes from. And in terms of a list of comparators specifically, that we don't have access to that information frankly.
Okay. The last question I have, and then I have a, well, I have a question for staff, but um, I get how compression works. I've worked in major enterprise corporations for many decades and um, I've always wondered when we, when you talk about compression and catching up, um, what, what's the attrition rate of those who leave because they've been passed over for whatever the reason is, you're going to have some people who go, I'm not getting a raise. And that, that's creating the compression, right? In a way, because people leave and then people come in and we've made adjustments to the salary bands. And the people go, oh, they're, they're making as much money as I have been making for so far less time. And now you've, you've created a cycle, right? So now the person leaves and you've got to backfill that person. And so how do we, how do we get out of that cycle and how do we can? What do we do to avoid these compression ratios besides the fact that the economy is going to drive some of it? And the competition is going to drive some of it, but what do we do better from a staffing perspective? To ensure that those performers are are getting the bumps that they need to avoid the compression on the backend?
Yeah. Good question. I think the answer would really be to following the compression analysis is going to be getting employees on a conservative model to the salary range midpoint in 10 years. And then you're going to slow that aggressive sort of increases after that 10 years pending they're in the same job. And so the goal would be to get employees to from the minimum to the maximum in 20 to 25 years. And so if you adopt the compression models, you've adopted that aggressive model. And so you'd want to keep kind of that process moving forward, which is kind of step one. I think step two is ensuring pay for performance is something that if you don't do today, is something that's um, considered in the future. Essentially, we want to utilize our dollars toward high performers low in the range. And unfortunately, that's taking it from poor performers, high in the range, right? And so part of that's called uh, something like a merit matrix. Um, that's pretty common, um, which you can implement and it creates this model of aggressive pay for high performers who are low in the range. And so the idea of getting employees through the salary range quicker uh, for again, high performers is what creates this model of of tenure.
And we don't have that today, correct?
We do not currently, um, but also with some of the items that CBIZ is aiding us with is an outline to some procedures to utilize this grade system. So when we do have the new hires, we do keep that structure and not create more compression when we bring on the new hires versus having the ones with more tenure. So this would aid us in consistency with that.
Okay. And then the last thing for for staff, this is directed towards uh, chief. Didn't we just do with the sworn officers step adjustments to get everybody caught back up? Because one of the one of the sheets, one of your slides indicated that we still have how many officers that are below their their?
20.
I thought we, we literally just gave almost $40,000 if that's the number that's in my head, $38,000.
So, yeah, so wow, this is really loud. We, we gave the raise that we could afford. We didn't give the raise to fix. So um, I'm super glad that they did this study to show what we've been trying to say the whole time, or at least bolster it, right? So if you look at the number to say we're 92.8% of to the midpoint, which means we're all below the midpoint. So to get there, we've discussed and Taylor's been great working with me specifically on keeping 5% between all the ranks and you know, having the step program. And again, like, we're not fixing this with this round. We're getting closer to where we need to be. And we're kind of just chipping away every time we can, year after year to get at least to the midpoint. And then we can have that discussion of where do we actually want to be in that range?
Okay, I, I just, I don't remember that we weren't getting all the way there. I thought that was the, to get us there, but okay, that that makes sense.
Right. So a lot of what we did, because we did talk about that one time chunk of money was to get rid of the compression issues we were having. Um, so that was basically fixed. Now it's just getting us up to market and that, like I said, I could have come to you last year. In fact, I think we talked about it because somebody said, why not 7%? Why not 8%? And it literally went up exponentially and we knew how much money we had to work with. And we stayed within those confines, but again, it was just a step in the right direction, knowing that we would need to do this again and potentially again.
Yeah, and that's the issue, right? Because we're, we've been talking about what we do to try to conserve the loss of revenue that we're, we're getting. And it's, yeah, I mean, I wish we could wave a magic wand and just fix all this in one minute.
But thanks for that explanation. I, because I was like, I thought we just did this.
Well, and I would tell you too. To where the market is, the market changes again. So having them in this five year plan, which I thought was a great addition to our package here. We're going to have the pros telling us, hey, this is how you stay with or above or ahead of the market where we were always just playing catch up and doing the research ourself.
As long as there's an understanding that the market and the tax revenue that's that come in overall dictate year over year adjustments. So if the, if the salaries say one thing and we approve them, but we can't, we can't give them because we don't have the tax revenue that that, everybody understands that.
Well, I, I think we've proven that we are doing that already. I mean, with last year asking for what I knew we could afford, we're going to, the same thing again is you know, we talked about setting aside 3% for employee raises. And so okay, if they're saying I needed to do 6%, I said, okay, well, I'll do 3% and then get us that much closer. And then maybe the 3% could come next year. The other thing too is, you know, we've taken employees off the table. We're not hiring them because we want to make sure we're taking care of the people we do have before hiring someone. And God forbid that next year I have to let them go. Right? So we're, we're constantly working as a leadership team to make sure we're doing that, but it's a give and take. And to Mr. King's point, yeah, we, we know that it, it does depend on the market and that we can't just, you know, throw willy nilly money and not think about what it costs next year and the year after and the year after that.
Okay, well, um, once again, I'll reach out to Marco. Any questions or comments?
Yes, uh, actually, my question was the question that you asked the chief, uh, which is the the, the salary study that he had done and how this would affect um, what, what he had done. So that that question was answered. Uh, so I appreciate it. Um, I did push the request to speak. Did that come through? I was just kind of testing it. Just for S and G's.
So it did come through on my side, but I didn't know how.
Okay. Yeah, because I was like, well, let me, let me, let me see how, how this works. Um, that, that was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Anybody on the council here that would like to add anything else?
I want to say thank you and thank you.
Yeah, I do appreciate the leadership you've thrown out there for, from an HR perspective. It's been, as I chatted with you the other day, really great that you've, you've pushed through all the other stuff and we're getting people on track and um, and it makes sense. You're, you're, you're putting it out there so it makes sense to us.
I do appreciate that. And uh, just want you to know without everyone here in the town, council, mayor, the team and that support, we're making sure to put the employees first and keeping the town in mind. Like they are our biggest asset. I know that sounds corny, but taking care of our folks here and giving them something transparent that they're able to see and know is going to be consistent is a huge step.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Okay, um, well, that, that's the presentation. And if there's no other questions or comments, we do have a resolution before us to approve the structure that they've provided along with the classifications. And I, I just, I guess the only other thing is we've never had this before or we've had something similar. And we're modernizing or something to that effect.
Yes, we are making sure it's modernized and with the help of CBIZ over the next five years, it will maintain. And it is something that they've given us a lot of tools. Like I said, to have that transparency that was requested by a lot of our employees through that survey of having a lot more transparency with pay with everything along those lines. So this is what that's going to be.
And then if we, if this does, this resolution does pass, which I hope it does, then it's back on for the to fit into the 2026 budget. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. Yes. This is something that we would be able to review and bring in front of you every single year as part of that process. Yes.
And when you do that, because I, I think it would be really important since you've got the consultant working, I would like to see uh, some form of year over year line, right? So chart, if the economy keeps pushing things up, I'd like to see that that climbing up if there's adjustments. And if for some reason there's a retraction, I would like to see that too. If salaries start going down.
Okay.
Right? I mean, it's possible, although not, not very likely. Because obviously if we keep moving salaries up and the tax revenues stay somewhat flat, other adjustments are going to have to get made.
Correct.
There'll be no more bucket trucks.
Man. And I would like to kind of um, point out too, that the great part of having this structure is if every year when we do those job description reviews, if there's new uh, responsibilities, new requirements, certifications, things along those lines, those will be that adds that flexibility to move, say, one position into the next grade level due to that higher responsibility advancement. So creating this crisis stability, but yeah, no more bucket trucks.
Oh, no ATVs. Okay. All right. Well, we love you, Tom. I was just, bucket trucks came to my mind.
Those can be very versatile. Almost all departments can use ATVs.
That's true. We can, we can have a sharing program for the ATVs. As, as Dan goes down to count trees, you can use the ATV. Okay, uh, do I have a motion for this particular resolution?
I yes, regarding resolution number 38 dash 2025, resolution to approve salary structure and classification for non sworn and sworn positions.
Second.
Motion in a second. There it is. Touch anything. Did you vote?
No.
She's not get. Oh, you're on the wrong screen. You need to go to the screen where the voting is of it just it's blinking at you to the right, to the right. Right there. It's yeah, it's going pick me, pick me. Oh, boom. It's all green, six to zero. That passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you. Thank you. All right, to the gentleman in the back, we're getting to you. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams. They raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Okay, if you could let us know who you are.
You need to do four minutes. It's all right. We won't push you out. He wants to talk about lights.
I know.
Are you going to be able to put that up there or no?
Awesome. Okay, my name is Steve Decev and I'm from Woodmore. And last month, the HOA had me uh, work on the lighting. I'm a lighting representative. I'm a lighting manufacturers rep. I do. Lot of jobs throughout Colorado. This picture you're looking at is Flagstaff, Arizona.
Yes.
Seventy thousand people. Look at the color. It's an amber color. So what it is, is the more warm you go with the color, the more you can see the stars at night. The more cooler you go, the less stars you see at night. So if you see on that Flagstaff, that's twenty seven kilometers. So that's sixteen seventeen miles up. So what's happening is this city is like the standard. And the reason why it has an amber color. Is because it has a telescope that goes to Pluto.
Exactly.
So you need to see the stars at night. Durango, Colorado in January just changed their lighting ordinances. They're going to go to amber. So they're at sixty five hundred. We're at the same elevation to Flagstaff and we're at five K. You look at the Phillips Phillips uh, gas station, five K, Safeway parking lot, five K, Dollar Tree, five K, McDonald's, five K. And then I did this presentation in three minutes to the Palmer trustees who want to put the, you know, the chipmunk in the sky. The beaver. So just think what's going to happen when you can see from Larkspur what it's going to do to the dark sky. Monument uh, Douglas County has more stricter dark sky than we do. So all I'm doing is just doing an education. I think that the way this thing is moving. If you're going to put industrial buildings in here, I really think and even Palmer Lake has in their lighting ordinances. Amber color and they don't even follow their own lighting ordinances. So I just think it's a really serious, we're in a mountain city. We should be at this color temperature. We shouldn't be like Las Vegas. And I think what's happening, we're going to be missing all the nice, what did this place look like in the eighteen hundreds? You probably could just touch the stars. So what I'm seeing right now as a lighting guy, I'm fixing things. Fort Collins is going three K. Boulder's going three K. Why isn't Monument in Palmer Lake the highest elevation on the I twenty five corridor at five K? I don't know why. So I just wanted to give that education. I have the pictures of this. And I also have the colors, the color temperatures for you. So that's the yellow and that's how you go wider. The more white you go, you see the new cars today that white light, it feels like a train's behind you. The lumens are the same. That's the power of light. But the problem is there's no standards in the automobile industry. You're driving down the road and it's an F one fifty pickup. So I have these for you. Dark sky, if you want to have the fixtures going down. It but you still have to have the power of light being monitored because you could have fifteen thousand lumens going and it could shoot twenty feet. That's why in Palmer Lake, even in uh, Colorado Springs, you have to be point oh one foot candles on the sidewalk. That's why when you had that Dollar Tree and they were pointing at forty five degrees and it was going right in the middle of the one oh five. That's the education I kind of wanted to bring to you guys tonight. If you want me to, if you want to use me for anything, I'd be more than happy to. Um, I think I did it in three minutes.
Okay, so you're going to get four minutes because I'm going to ask you a question.
Sure.
We don't normally do this, by the way.
Yeah, we don't normally do this, but this is this is an important conversation, frankly. So.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So.
Hey, Marco.
You can do you can do these tones and and I mean, this that this doesn't mean incandescent lights. This is LEDs. You can do these and all these in LEDs. In fact. A lot of these you can adjust with on the fixture. Is that is that just like?
Good question. So in the last three years, you can get a fixture that has a color selectable.
Right.
And I could bring those fixtures in, but the older LEDs are just they're stuck at four thousand or five thousand K.
Right.
You can't adjust them.
That's daylight five thousand, right?
That's five thousand. And you got them all over like those canopy lights on Phillips sixty six station. Can you imagine what that's going to look like on Buc-E's?
Right.
Because it's, it should be an amber color. That's why Durango is changing everything. So I don't know how I could help. I was thinking about maybe going to the.
I could tell you how you can help. So we're in the middle of our comprehensive plan and it is called monumenttwentyforty dot com. We are engaging everybody in the community. It would have been great if you had come to any of the kickoff workshops, but that man right there. Dan Ungaliter, you you are hereby tasked by the council to engage with Dan. And as we come up with our standards going forward. I there's no reason why those kind of things don't get brought up so that the community at large can hear about them. Because you all have a much bigger audience than what you what you see here.
And you're and you're so you're talking like three K. That's where you're kind of targeting for.
Yeah.
I mean, I I just redid all my outdoor lights at my house and I did all this stuff and it was a huge difference.
That three K is amber's got to be on the very left hand corner.
Right.
That's where it's got to be. And if you go, you need to drive home tonight. Now you're going to look, look at the houses. Uh, even on Douglas County, you have to have eight hundred lumens. So lumens is the power of light. So if that. Front porch light is hitting twenty feet out. That's what they call light trespass. So like if you have a residential, that's why I'm fixing Woodmore because. You got somebody's light shuang in somebody else's property. So you have to adjust that to say you can still have the same light, but you don't have that so much power in that light to do that.
Is your contact information on there? Yeah, because I have jellyfish and I'm I my house glows. It floats.
No, that this is awesome. We've been we've been uh. Or I have at least been trying to figure out what we can do to try to take care of these, you know, these the night. Because dark sky means a different thing to other to different people.
Right.
Wish wish we had known you were coming would have given you presentation time.
Right.
Next time with fixtures.
Did you make?
Thank you, Steve.
He did.
Okay.
He did.
I was sitting there.
Okay, um, well, I I don't have a problem with a more in depth. Um, would love to have have a broadcast so the public sees it. So if you want to put it on a future item and and have Mr. deceive deceive Decev. Come back, I would be happy to have us entertain his um, dioramas that he brought with him to. Palmer Lake. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Um, other folks would, oh, Haley, come on down. Who? She doesn't have cookies.
I know I don't have cookies. Sorry. No cookies. Good evening, um, Mayor and Council members. Haley Chapin with Tri Lakes Cares just wanted to take a quick moment to say thank you for your support and attendance at the Taste of Tri Lakes Cares event that was earlier. Well, I guess it's not this month anymore in May. Um, it was a very successful sold out event. We had over four hundred people there. Um, our preliminary preliminary numbers coming in showed us netting over a hundred and forty thousand, which is going to go right back into. Serving our residents in our community to make sure that people who have needs, we can help them live a thriving life here and be productive citizens. So thank you for your support of that event and your attendance. I hope you all enjoyed um, hearing the story of Raquel Garcia, one of our local Tri Lakes residents, and her story was very, very powerful. And it takes a lot of courage to be able to share that information and inspire others to give and participate. And she did a fabulous job. So. Kudos to her. Um, and if any of you have the opportunity to go visit her and support her operation. She has the Lake and Lantern um, cafe that's up in Palmer Lake. So I we encourage supporting. Our community members, especially ones like that who have really gone through a difficult time and we've been able to be there to support her. So anyway.
She was an inspiration and um, we had, we've already talked about going up to visit in her place. So.
Yeah.
They're closed on Tuesdays.
Facebook page for their hours since they've been changing it. They're trying to find the right the right knack of the hours, but. Um, she is a powerhouse in this community doing a lot of great things and um, we are thrilled to be partnering with her and providing. Mental health support for community members who need it. And uh, anyway, just wanted to say thank you for your support.
Thank you, Haley.
I heard she had a great weekend, too. This past weekend, uh, online, she was inundated with support.
Yes.
That's an amazing thing how the community came together for her.
You know, sometimes uh, bad attention actually brings a lot of good support behind it from a lot of the caring community members who. Really know what the appropriate thing to do is and support. So.
Yep.
I encourage you all to support her.
Just since you're here.
Yeah.
Um, did Mr. Wyson, our county commissioner, was he aware? Because this is his first year and I don't remember was were you there, Bill?
I don't believe so, but um, I did send the invite to. He has other things. There's a lot of meetings.
This is a really, you need to put that in the back of your brain, uh, that this is the the it's one of the best events. Up here, uh, really should come next time.
I always send the saved the day out to not only you guys, but as well as uh, Palmer Lake Council and both of our county commissioners. Um, trying to make sure that the people who really do serve the community are there in supporting the event. So. You will be on my list for sure to get that invite for the next year. So.
I have a just one comment in terms of feedback because I've been hearing, I'm sure you have too. Lots of us have. The way it was handled this year, big time. Hello, kudos. Great. In terms of letting people do their own thing, you know, serve the food that they're that they're known for. And it's just been all positive.
Little part of me kind of.
I know, I know.
Because that had the literal taste of Tri Lakes Cares, but um, we did listen to the community. That's what we're good at, right? And we listened to hear that the restaurants. Wanted to showcase something that you can then go to their restaurant and then get, especially if you liked it. One of the restaurants. I think it's Black Forest Bistro. Whatever they created last year, they got such a good response. They have it on their menu now. I can't remember what it is, but so that's kind of interesting. But we did listen to the feedback and it was they wanted to showcase their own cuisine to help support their businesses. And that's what we want. We are a very big advocate of. Supporting those that support us. That's why I'm here all the time. You guys support us. I want to show support of the town and the community. So. Um, we listened to that feedback and incorporated that in this year. So um, it worked out really well.
I just wanted you to know.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. Yes, appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comment uh, in Commissioner Wyson, come on down.
Do I need to sign in?
You probably should just put down the commish.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and in uh, council, a couple of things. I will be there at five thirty on the eighteenth. Do you want me to come pick you up? Actually, uh, I'll have a little speaking role. So we're working on that. Uh, but the the main thing I wanted to talk about is since I was here at the beginning of May. The Pike Peak Regional Office of Emergency Management announced that they have uh, come up and have officially launched. Uh, evacuation software modeling tool. Uh, all the fire districts are getting brought up to speed. So when you were talking about what's going on up at Forest Lakes. Uh, this is something, it's not designed as a planning tool per se. But it is something that will allow you to understand uh, between both police and uh, fire. What are the impacts uh, that are going to affect that particular part of the area when it, let's say it's all built out. Um, so just wanted to announce that. It was something that was near and near to my heart. Uh, for the last five years, been promoting that uh, both at a Colorado Springs level. And my promise was at the county level and they delivered. So that's extremely uh, good news. And I will uh, also look forward to participating in the, you know, marketing event for restaurants. Uh, at the next uh, next year. So what a cheap way to do it. So thank you very much.
We expect you to be at the advocate you have been in the past for this modeling because. Fire wildfires is a big major concern around here and.
Well, we we love all this. We love all this rain, but what's going to happen in a month? It's going to be tall grass that dies out and becomes uh, pretty potent fuel.
Right. So. We're buying lawnmowers instead of bucket trucks.
Buying lawnmowers and bucket trucks.
Sure.
Or or put modex, you know, mower decks on the ATVs, right?
Right. Put mower decks on the ATVs, right?
Multi-purpose. Uh, thank you.
Since you brought it up, Chief R and and Madeline, we're probably overdue for uh, our own OEM. Uh, meeting. The last time Chief and I went, it was a couple of years ago, right? It was right after you came on board. And I don't know if we've had shifting of positions, but we probably need to do an update, I'm guessing. Maybe another tabletop exercise.
Deal.
Deal.
Yeah. No, so Commander Tim Johnson's taking over our aspect of emergency management. And uh, just hearing from Madeline today, who had spoke with the fire chief, we're going to be putting something on for the leadership team. Um, it's obviously something we can open up to council as well for an update.
Just want to make sure I know what I'm supposed to do.
Sign the checks.
Okay. Excellent. As long as as long as she tells me I can. I want them bouncing. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Will, do we have any public comments online? All right, we will close public comment. Next up, future agenda item authorization.
Here we go.
I've got a list.
Um, well, good evening, council. Um, I have several requests for you tonight. Um, one of them is, um, we would like two members from the council to participate in our citizen service level advisory committee. We're getting ready to announce that to the public, but we'd like to get your commitment as to who you would like to serve on that committee.
What is what's the?
Um, so that's the, we talked about that during the retreat. This is going to be looking at the service levels of the town and how it relates to our budget. Um, and what's the appropriate service levels and and um, how we're going to meet those needs in the future.
Anybody volunteering?
Well, I'll do it.
That's one.
I'll do it if Laura's doing it.
Okay, um, anybody on council have any objections to? Chronic and King. Marco?
I'm good. Over.
Okay. You've got two volunteers.
Um, this one's more optional, but wanted to give you the option. Um, as a member of the Rotary um, organization here locally, we can have a member. Um, from the town council attend those meetings. They have one remote meeting once a month and then one in person meeting once a month. So just wanted to see. Mayor, like you would like to do that?
I I will make every attempt to go to those meetings.
Porsha and I try to attend, but it's here and there. So, um. Mister, um, oh, I just lost his name. The person that just was speaking about deceive deceive Decev. Um, speaking about the lighting. Um, so you're okay with him coming to a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we would also like to have a workshop with council sometime in the near future to discuss economic development and some of the goals that council has. Um, I don't have any dates yet in mind. I just wanted to kind of give you this as an idea, but I can send out emails as far as when a date would be um, in a workshop, but we. Try to have it prior to a council meeting, but wanted to get your approval on that.
Everybody good with that? Marco, you good with that?
Yes, good to go.
Uh, and then the last item, um, Chief Kovak of Monument Fire is working on a elected officials' roles and responsibilities in major emergencies. Um, so having a session with not only his board, but also our board, our council. and potentially leadership and some of the PD leadership as well. So his proposed dates are Friday, August twenty second or Tuesday, August twenty sixth. Um, it'd be a half day session looking at, um, either in the morning and providing breakfast or in the afternoon and providing lunch.
Twenty second or what day?
So it's Friday, August twenty second or Tuesday, August, August twenty sixth. And if you don't have a firm date right now, you can always let me know, but he's, he's working with, um, a friend of his who's offered to do this. So we're trying to get the date nailed down.
I'm, I'm okay with doing it. I mean, everybody has to, it's going to, you can't do it.
I'll be Oklahoma City for each other.
Oh, are they going to, you're going to go back to being a controller? Oh. Because we're short. If you haven't heard.
What are the dates again? Give me.
Either dates good for me. Marco?
Go ahead.
What was your question?
The, what are the dates again?
Friday, August twenty second or Tuesday, August twenty sixth.
I'm, I can do the twenty second. Fridays are better for me than, than Tuesdays.
Great, thank you. Um, those are all of the items that I have for you tonight.
Okay. We're almost there. Council comments. Uh, first up, um, I do want to make sure that the public hears. We do have a council vacancy. And so for those people, uh, in, that live in Monument proper, who are of the correct age and time living here in the town, we do have a vacancy, so please submit to the clerk, uh, your, um, letters of interest. Uh, also, today is Monument's birthday, one hundred and forty-six years. So happy birthday to Monument. I did, I was thinking of getting a cake or a donut and I, I forgot. Someone's got mints. We can pass mints around. And, uh, I, there was one other thing and I can't remember what it was. So we'll just skip past it and see if anybody else has any, what?
Focus factor.
Anybody else? Council comments? Marco?
Nada.
Um, yes, we have an introduction to be made by our attorney, Mr. Cole.
We are. Finished the council comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Partner, Ashley Hernandez Schlegel. Ashley's going to be very, uh, very involved in, in helping us do our work for Monument. Ashley, she can tell you a little bit about herself, but she's been doing this work a very long time. Uh, she's been a litigator. She's not that old. That's true. Uh, she started very, very young. Uh, very experienced litigator has, has worked primarily for local governments. So she knows her, her way in and out of our issues. And, uh, it was just a wonderful thing that, uh, she, she agreed to come to work for us. Um, also, uh, just a little color commentary. Ashley has a great family, a couple of young daughters. She was a, uh, a competitive gymnast, a, a division one gymnast in college. Her husband was a basketball player. So, uh, don't mess with them. Uh, but yeah, we're really, really pleased.
Here he told you.
Yes. So anyway, uh, you, you're going to, you're going to find Ashley to be a wonderful addition to our team and your team. And I'll let her say a few.
Just, I'm very excited for the opportunity to work with all of you guys and it's nice to meet everybody. And, um, like Bob said, if I can be of help, please let me know.
Excellent. Welcome. Okay, uh, we are now at the point where we're going to kick most of you out of the chambers as we go into executive session. I want to thank you all for all the support and information you've provided us tonight. I know Ms. Hogan was back there pretty quiet.
She's still recovering.
Oh, and, and, uh, so I want to just little color commentary about my trip down to Arizona, um, last week. Do not mess with number three. I don't know if that's the number you normally wear always. Saw Laura Hogan in action on the ice in full, full ice hockey gear with a stick in her hands. Are they camera sticking her? It, it was about a hundred degrees outside, but about forty degrees below zero inside. It was, I had to wear a jacket. Um, but it was, it was great privilege to go and, and watch you play in your tournament and, and your team of all women, uh, came in second in the tournament. So congrats to that. Oh, well, you'd have to ask her. Uh, no, they're not allowed to hit. They're, they're, they're not allowed to hit, although I think there was a couple bumps I saw coming around the boards.
It was nice to have a fan. Thank you for.
You're welcome. I, I can't wait for the next time to do it. I, it was maybe a better rink next time, uh, Scott Stiller Chandler or something like that.
For sure.
So anyway, that was, it was a lot of fun. I'm, the whole council, we should make a road trip and go down to Arizona. Okay, um, do I have a motion for, uh, ten A and B?
I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to twenty four dash six dash four two four B CRS for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding pending legal projects. Followed.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Followed immediately by executive session pursuant to twenty four six four two four B CRS for a conference with the town attorney and the town's water attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions regarding water supply and pursuant to twenty four six four two four E CRS to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators regarding proposed agreements with the Loop Water Authority and the Northern Deliver System.
Second. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Cole.
Just, uh, one clarification, we'd like to flip the order. You don't need to change your motion, but we'd like to flip the order, um, of those two matters. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have to vote.
Where do I?
Did you get rid of?
I did. I haven't touched a thing.
Go to the other tab.
Go to the middle tab. You, you did do something.
I did touch it. I did not touch it.
And just tell her your vote.
Yeah, I guess you're going to have to tell her at this.
Yes.
So is that a yes vote, Ms. Chronic?
Say what?
Is that a yes vote?
All right, the motion passes six to zero. We will be going to executive session. Thank you very much for everybody here. We will not be, um, taking any action afterwards. So it'll be a journey from executive session.